Joining the planning and planning commissioners for the public in the public for the participation today. It's gonna be a little tricky, so hang in there, but we'll get it together. My name is David Weiner. I'm the Chair of the Virginia Beach Planning Commission. Welcome to the January 13th, 2021 Virtual Information Session of the Virginia Beach Planning Commission. I call this meeting to order. Today's informal session is being conducted electronically in accordance with Virginia Code Section 2.2-3708.2, Virginia Code Section 15.2-1413, the city's continuity of government ordinance adopted on September 15th, 2020, and Chapter 1289 of the 2020 Acts of Assembly as amended. We will start the staff presentations on the items in today's public hearing agenda that will begin at noon. Planning Commissioners note that we're operating this meeting a little differently as you will not need to raise your virtual hands to ask any questions or comments. But we will, but I can look at you and see you online here, so we're gonna ask that you just raise your hand. We'll call on you so everybody doesn't talk over each other. For the benefit of the record, please keep your video on unless you need to step away. And also to reduce feedback, please keep your audio muted unless speaking. The staff will also be helping us muting and unmuting of the commissioners as necessary. All right, now I'll pass this on to Mr. Tan, Planning Director, for procedures of today's meeting. Mr. Tan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I appreciate your patience as we try to figure out what we're, how we're handling these virtual meetings. We hope that this will be the last one, but as we know, that that may not be possible. So we do appreciate your patience, and I believe that we've, the staff has tried our best, and we've been testing it with the Board of Zoning Appeals also, and the Chesapeake Bay Board and One Un's Board, to try to make this one smoothly. Today, we have no briefings, but what I do want to offer is an opportunity for our zoning administrator, Mr. Kevin Kemp, to give you an update real quick on the short-term rentals, our public outreach that we've been doing, and some information that we'd like to share and provide to you later today after the hearing. Mr. Kemp? One second, Kevin. Let's make sure you're up there. We need to promote you. Can someone promote Mr. Kemp?
Okay, well, it looks like I have been unmuted, so I can start talking while we work out whatever we need to work out. Good morning, Planning Commissioners. Just wanted to give you a brief update on what's going on with short-term rentals and our public outreach. As we discussed the last time, when I stood up in front of you, we were having two virtual sessions. The first one was on December 18th. We had 48 participants listening on that. Just so you know, the format of these is that, you know, Bobby and I give a brief overview of the proposed overlay ordinances, and then we open it up. That usually takes about 15 minutes, then we open it up to the public for comment. And it's not a discussion back and forth. They are typing their questions in, and we are responding to them. All this gets recorded, posted online, and I'll discuss that in a moment. We had our second virtual public outreach on January 7th, and we had a much better attendance. We had 185 plus or minus people attend that one. You know, we had a decent amount of questions. I believe we had 85 total questions. These are posted online with the questions and the answers at strvbgov STR. Really, most of the questions, there were concerns over the grandfathering, what it means, is their property grandfathered or not, the location of the proposed overlays, you know, geographically, why were certain areas chosen, why certain weren't, and what it means to be in and out of, you know, certain overlays are responding to. There we go. Now I got a webcam too. Thank you all. In regulations and enforcement, the biggest concerns were occupancy, parking, and the CUP requirement. Those were reoccurring themes that came up. There was also a decent amount of discussion about the new deck regulations and safety inspections. You know, what constituted a construction professional as far as getting it inspected and certified, and what types of decks would need to be certified, whether ground level wood, patios, balconies, that sort of thing. Lastly, I'll mention, there was some concern about the public process. We did get some feedback that people said, well, hey, with something this big, I think, you know, it should be done in person. You know, however, I think we're all aware of the limitations we have right now that this was, you know, the best we could do. And, you know, really, the, I think you would agree that the turnout we had for these two hearings of, you know, 230-plus people is, you know, if we ever got that for a in-person public hearing, I think we would be thrilled. So that was the first public outreach. As I said, all this information is posted online for you, as well as the actual presentations that we did. Links to them also posted, we had a survey, a short-term rental survey. We posted this online. It was open for a couple weeks, and we just closed it out last Tuesday. We were able to compile the results for you, and I'll just give a real brief summary of what that survey said, and then we will post the results online and for you to see. But we had 793 participants in the survey, 3,903 responses, and received just under 500 comments. So we are very, very satisfied with the participation in the survey. They're really general questions that just kind of wanted to see where are the people taking the survey, you know, how they were impacted by the proposed ordinance and what their feelings were on it. Of the people participating, 55% were located in a proposed overlay. 55% of those taken said that short-term should be permitted without CUPs. 59% said short-term rentals should not be prohibited, even outside the areas of the CUPs. 56% said short-term rentals should be able to continue once the CUP has expired. Then we asked a question of the proposed regulations, which are the most, you know, which concern you the most. Overwhelmingly, 57% of people said that occupancy, the number of people staying in a home was the biggest concern. Noise was second at 14%, parking had 13%, which was a little surprising. We do get a lot of feedback on parking, and it does, a lot of consideration goes into it through our review process, but only 13% of people had that as their primary concern, and trash was last. We then had a section for just other responses. We had 70 of those. You know, I'll break it down just real quickly into the general topics. Of those 70, 29 were about the regulations, the proposed regulations, the ordinance. 10 were about changing the neighborhood character. Nine were about location and where short-term rentals should or shouldn't be permitted. Four were about the enforcement or lack thereof. Three were about the approval process and lack of civic engagement. And then 15 were miscellaneous comments, and most of those really were general comments or got into the tax collection and the Commissioner of Revenue stuff, which, as you know, we really aren't related with. So then, lastly, we had a comment section where we had 421 additional comments. I'd say, on the whole, if I had to guess without doing an official count, it was probably about 60% negative towards short-term rentals versus 40% positive. I did go through all the comments and figure out where they were. 45 of them were specific to the Sandbridge area, and a majority of those comments revolved around Sandbridge, leaving it alone, no further regulations. 39 of them were at the North End, and by far, a majority of these character comments were about the character of the North End neighborhood and worried about the adverse impacts of short-term rentals. I'd say, you know, in the North End, about 70% were against short-term rentals versus 30% in favor. The Croatan neighborhood had 17, and that was a pretty, pretty even divide between whether they wanted to be included in an overlay or not. 15 were Cape Story by the Sea up in the Shore Drive area, and they overwhelmingly did not want to be included in the proposed overlay. They were curious as to why their civic association had voted unanimously against short-term rentals, but they were included and were concerned about the policy and why, and lack of civic outreach. Lastly, 11 were in the Shore Drive corridor outside of Cape Story, and those were predominantly, you know, wanted to keep a residential character and were against short-term rentals. So this is a real brief summary. We have the complete set of data, which we will post online to review. I just wanted to give you a real brief rundown of some of the input we've gotten. Overall, staff is extremely happy and excited at the feedback we've gotten and the amount of feedback. We appreciate people taking their time, and, you know, I think it's provided very valuable information moving forward. So if there's not anything else, Bobby, I'll turn it back to you.
Kevin, can you give us the exact website link?
These will all be posted at www.vbgov.com/str. And we will have the presentations, we will have the survey results, we'll have the summary of the survey, as well as a table we created with all the questions and comments that we received.
Commissioner, oh, Mr. Edman.
So I'm not interested in a summary. Can we have access to those, those comments? You said there were whatever, 400-some comments or something like that, and you just described them as 17 on this side. So I'd like to read those.
Absolutely. When we post the survey result summary, at first, you'll see a couple summary pages with pie charts, and then, in total, it's about, it's 42 pages, and every single comment's listed out in full text. They haven't been revised at all. It's as they were said, verbatim.
Great, thank you.
Any other Commissioners? I'm trying to keep track for you, Mr. Edman. So Commissioners, we do feel like we've got a significant amount of feedback in regards to the short-term rental. We did have a bit. We'll let you know. We did have a issue with our mail vendor who promised us they would send out our postcards in a timely manner and then did not send them out in a timely manner. So our first meeting, some people received the postcards with a day in advance, while others got it the day of after it happened. So unfortunately, our mail vendor overpromised and underdelivered to provide us our service, and they blamed it on the holidays, but whichever. But we do believe that we received a lot of comments. We've also gotten a lot of comments on, through the email address, str@vbgov.com, which the short-term rental staff is manning on a daily basis, either providing answers or taking down all the comments. So we do have a significant amount of comments regarding that, and we also have a significant amount of letters that we will also provide to you as well. It is a lot. It's a lot of PDFs. I think, last time I checked, we were at around 80 or 90 PDFs as far as people sending letters about their feelings toward short-term rentals. A lot of them were organized comments, at least dealing with a specific civic association, but some were personal letters about their feelings about short-term rentals. That being said, I do ask for some direction, Planning Commissioners. We are at a point where we are required to mail and notify folks. Will just sent me a message. We are at now 150 email comments from the public. So add the 150 email comments along with the question and answers that we did during those public comment sessions, and we think we got a pretty significant amount of feedback from the public. That's about, that's really all over the board. So, I'm sorry, Mr. Ed, Mr. Weiner?
Yes, sir, Mr. Tan. So as we talked about in the last couple days, we don't feel like we would want to have a short-term rental virtual hearing. It's, I think it's something we need to be in front of. It's fair to have people, to listen to the people in front of us, and also a workshop. So we'd like to talk to you about or discuss it with other planning commissioners, get feedback from everybody else. But I think we're, we'd like to move our February voting hearing on short-term rentals to March, so we can, and that is if we are virtual. I think we're gonna be virtual, but we have, I still think we need a workshop in between voting on short-term rental. Of course, that's my opinion. I'd like to get some feedback from other Commissioners also.
This is Mike Edman. I definitely agree with David. We're getting a large volume of information to assimilate. We've got a lot of new aspects to the regulation that are being proposed, and we need to, we need to give public more than adequate time to chime in on this topic. It's, it's a hot topic. It's a serious topic, and I would prefer to wait a month to vote.
I agree with Mike and with, and with Mr. Weiner.
Anybody else like to weigh in on this?
This is George. I agree. I'm just concerned if it gets extended on the pandemic side, so where does that, where does that leave us? That's all I'm worried about, but who knows? But I am, I am agreeing with you, Dave.
Go ahead, Mr. Edman.
Following up on what George just said, can you give us a little bit more guidance on the? I mean, I know you're gonna say, gosh, who knows, but we do know somewhat about, about what the direction is with regard to in-person versus virtual. I was surprised we were going virtual again. I mean, we were in a big gigantic room, all separated by, you know, all sorts of distance, wearing masks, et cetera, et cetera. So I don't know whether it's just kind of a show or what. Is there any metric that is defining whether we're virtual or not? Because that seems to be, you know, a consideration that people have in, in when we do what we do. And it's just too easy, it seems to me, to say, oh, gosh, I don't know, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. Are we getting any kind of particular guidance as to why these are virtual as opposed to in-person? My gym is still open.
Mr. Ed.
Me.
Yeah, Mr. Edman, those are good comments. We're following the lead of the City Council at this moment. The City Council made all their meetings virtual, so once the City Council decides that they will begin meeting in person, the rest of the boards and commissions will follow suit. Mr. Edman, I'm sorry, you're muted.
Why do we have to follow what City Council does? Some rule about that?
We are, we are, we don't want to expose the public. You know, if City Council is holding their business virtually, we are trying to be consistent with our, with the holding of our business as well. We don't want to do something that is different than the City Council, and also that's the direction of the, of the City Manager at this moment. And I'm sorry, Commissioners, please make sure you're unmuted prior to speaking.
Sorry. I said you really didn't answer my question, but thank you.
I think, I think David's question is, is City Council just winging it? Or are they getting input from some scientific source or some data source? Some as to number of cases of coronavirus in Virginia Beach, and that's what they're facing their decision on? It's just like to know, you know, what to tell people, and they say, how come you all keep doing, having these virtual meetings? You really need to do that. People are going back to school, if you didn't hear that.
Mr. Edman, City Council is looking at all of the latest scientific and scientific information as well as the data provided by the Health Department and making a determination as to whether or not they believe that it is safe, safe for them and for the public to attend in person. When they go to virtual, all of the boards and commissions follow. Because if it isn't safe for City Council, it isn't safe for anyone. So that's where we are. I would also remind you that if you move this to March, you will be over your 100 days that Council gave you. And as such, Council can simply say, okay, we want it anyway. I know they haven't voted, but if they miss their 100 days, it comes to them with a recommendation for approval. So though you have never voted, it will still come to you, it will still come to Council as a recommendation for approval if you miss the 100 days. In contrast, City Council could also say, we know they're having trouble. There was a holiday. We'll just move it out until after they vote, but that decision is completely up to them.
Dave Edman?
Yeah, not to beat a dead horse, but City Council is looking at data from the Virginia Beach Health Department. When I go to their website, I don't find any data, and I've consulted it pretty regularly. So can someone tell me if there is a particular metric or set of metrics that they're following that will help me understand the difference? Just saying, they look at stuff and decide it's not safe. I mean, if that's the answer, okay, but what I'm trying to figure out is whether or not there's any particular data or metric that's, that's, that's driving that decision, or it's just kind of this vague notion of, you know, that we pick up from, I don't know, the newspaper? What? Mike's right. Many schools or schools have set a schedule for when they're coming back. And, you know, and, you know, I'm sitting in my office, and my gym is open, and, you know, so I'm just curious what, what, what it is that's driving that decision beyond just kind of, you know, staring off into the ether? Is there a particular metric that you're aware of that's driving that?
No, sir, there is not.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So Commissioners, I offer this. So because we've already told the public, as they've contacted us and reached out to the website, that February will be when this was heard by the Planning Commission. My suggestion is, if you do choose to continue it, you can continue it at that meeting, knowing the risk moving forward, if Council chooses to put it on an agenda. But you could still have the comments, because you could do a public hearing and still have people weigh in with their comments and have your feedback, some in this form that we're doing right now. And so you would still at least be able to get to hear them, along with the other information that you'll have about a month to read over, that, that staff will provide to you later today. And so then, at least, we allow, we don't move the target for the public. The public knows that, that the information that's already out there, that they'll come and speak. And then if it gets continued, then we can let the public know again that they have another chance to come and speak. So then, then, I don't want to say that we're toeing the line, but at least at that point, as long as the Commission is aware that if the City Council chooses to put it on their agenda, then, then staff would have to note that it wasn't voted on within the timeframe, and that it was therefore recommended for approval per the state code, so.
Can, can we ask for formal, formally ask for an extension on the 100 days?
The state code, it's a state code provision, and that provision does not allow for a extension of time. You could always ask them or tell them what the problem is by letter, probably from Mr. Tahan, and it's still up to them what they want to do.
Okay, this is Mike Edman. I just want to ask and make sure I understand these dates. In February, do we have one meeting or two?
Hey, Mike, let me, let me weigh in on that real quick. So as Mr. Tahan said, so at our meeting, at our hearing in February, we will determine then whether, or between now and February, I think we'll have a better understanding where we're, where we're gonna go with this. I'm sure we can talk with City Council and tell them how, what's going on, and, and see where we can go with this and defer it, listen to the public comments. Hopefully, we'll be at a, a place where we can have a non-virtual workshop, and then in March, we will have, be able to vote on it. I think that's the direction we need to go in right now, and I will work on making that happen if I can. And unless anybody else has any comments. Mike, you're muted.
I'm sorry, I, I'm still not clear. How many meetings do we have in February? And what are they, what are we doing at those meetings?
So, Mr. Edman, the, the only meeting that we currently have scheduled is the public, the public hearing in February. If you want to do a workshop, we can do, we can schedule a workshop for the Commissioners. That way, you have an opportunity to, to sit down and talk over all the comments that you'll kind of review over the next month that we've received from the public.
Okay, I'm still confused. All right, so we're gonna have one meeting in February, at which we're going to talk about short-term rentals, and we're having a public hearing, and so people will be, will be speaking, the members of the public will be, will be speaking. Any given number could be 70, it could be 50, it could be more. And we're also gonna have our regular application agenda at the same time. Is that right?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So let me clarify. The, you have your regular scheduled meetings, the, the application agenda meeting. So technically, this would be on the agenda for February for people to have public comment. That's how they would have that opportunity to comment.
So there's one meeting in February, on February the, what day?
February the 10th.
February 10th. And that's the only meeting we have in February, and I'm not, I'm not worried that it is the only meeting. I just need to know if it is, because I keep thinking maybe there's a separate meeting, hearing just for short-term rental, but that is not the case, as I understand it. It is part of our, our regular monthly Planning Commission meeting. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Dee, did you have a question?
Sue. I do, when you have an opportunity.
Mr. Oliver, he can unmute. Go ahead.
There, thanks. Hey, Bobby, I thought, or that we had requested last month a workshop prior to the public hearing. And I'm pretty sure we did. We, you, I thought planning staff was gonna get that on the calendar, and so that we could...
We can, so, right, so we can, and what changed between now and then was the, was the direction that we were given to go into a virtual meeting. I, our staff is used to operating in this virtual environment on a daily basis. So if you would like to do a workshop to talk over the comments after you've read them in the next couple weeks, so that you can, so that we can meet in this fashion and still talk about it, you can do that. That's why I'm asking for direction at this moment, to see if that's still the will of the Planning Commission or to wait till you meet in person.
Personally, I think a workshop is probably a good idea, only because it just seems to be a lot of information. And with your public outreach, there's a lot of information that's come back, and it would probably be to benefit for us to get together as a group to go over that prior to having the public start sharing their thoughts and ideas with us. But I'll leave that up to the rest of the Commission.
Let me weigh in again real quick. I agree with you 100% Dee, and by all means, if we can, if something happens between now and February 13th, or 10th, rather, that we can meet, not being virtually, but we can meet in person, then I would love to set up a... I would love to set up a, a workshop. But that's why I was saying, I think maybe we could have the public hearing first and then have the workshop before March. What do you think about that?
I thought we'd have, had to have.
Yep. Unmeet yourself Dee, Ms. Oliver.
I thought we had to have a vote before March.
That's, that was my question to you, David, and to Bobby, is where is council with this and our date line? So if we meet and hear everything, I mean, I can do it reverse either way. I just don't want to lose our ability to voice our opinion to council.
Good. So I, I've actually, um, I'm, I've talked to a council, a couple of council people and as of right now, they do not have a problem with us moving to March. They understand what we're going through right now, pandemic, and, um, they do not have a problem with us moving to March. That's what we're, we're hearing now. And I, and I think, I think they will not have a problem with that. So I think if we hear, have our hearing in February and have public comment, have a workshop between a February and March meeting before we vote in March, I think, I feel confident that that will.
So I will, I will ask the question, and I know, Mr. Graham, you have, you have a comment also, I apologize. I'll ask the question if, does the commission want to at least meet virtually to talk over some of the concerns or just wait until you can meet in person and potentially in February?
I'd be willing to meet virtually or in person.
Mr. Redmond?
Yeah, I, I agree. I think, you know, the, the, the greater logistical problems, technology problems that we have, when we're trying to bring calls in and sync it up with a television screen and all that stuff, if it's a conversation that we have to have amongst ourselves, seems to me that's probably going to be, um, I, I don't know that that would be as hard to pull off frankly, as what we're doing today. So I think it would be worth doing and we can go ahead and have that workshop and not have to put it off. I would much, much prefer to be able to do it in person, but you know, time is an issue. So I think that, that, I, I agree with Mike. I think we could do it that way. Thanks.
Mr. Graham, did you want to go ahead and comment as well?
Uh, yeah, yes. Um, I, I'm fine if we, if we do virtually. I mean, obviously person is the better. Um, my understanding with regard to if, if we don't vote on it in February and council doesn't extend it, um, it doesn't go to council with a recommendation for approval. Doesn't it just go to council with no recommendation?
Uh, no, Mr. Graham. It, by law, it will go to council with a recommendation for approval.
Okay. All right. Well, if David can't work it out, and I'm not, I'm not at the March hearing, um, if David can't, if he's not able to work it out where we can do it in person, I think we just have to do it virtually and vote on it in February. It's just, this is obviously, we spend more time on this than anything else and it just seems like we need to get it right or we're just, we're just kind of changing the problem and creating a problem. But that's, that's my two cents. No.
All right. Go ahead, Dee. So commissioners, what I'm hearing, at least what appears, unless there's any other comments, is that we will, in the next two weeks, um, we will contact you to try to set up a virtual public meeting or so that a virtual public workshop for your, for the planning commissioners where it'll be via WebEx and the public can just watch similar to a panelist. As Mr. Redmond noted, we won't have as many logistical issues with that. We can just have people log in and watch as we're discussing. After that, I, I still recommend that we keep it on the regular application agenda, your regular public hearing, because that's what we told the public for they can go comment, which is the February 1st. During that time, I will get with the chair, Mr. Weiner, to pen a letter to the city council. That way we can let them know formally of the logistical issues and let them know that we do plan on continuing to act on the item, but potentially moving it to the March agenda and requesting that they don't schedule it for their regular hearing agenda. And if we get a thumbs up or, or no issue with that, then we can continue, we'll just continue to move forward with that. Does that sound fair to the commissioners? Thank you, Ms. Oliver. What I do, there is one other logistical issue that deals with that. We, when it comes to a zoning overlay, technically we do have to mail every property owner in any proposed overlay because we are rezoning their property. My question to the commission is, would you like us just to go ahead and mail, since it is referred by council, we'll mail everybody in the proposed overlays that was forwarded, that was sent to the commission by council. Are there any other people you'd like us to notify that you may be potentially thinking about adding into an overlay? That way we can mail them. Any other properties that have been in any of the three presentations staff has given to you since October?
Can we be more, can we be more precise about what it's going to say this notice to these people before we have a whole, you know, thousand people freaking out?
So, yes, um, we are required to let them know that we are proposing to rezone them and that it will affect the short-term rental regulations on their properties. We are, we have already notified, everybody that's, that's in any of the proposed overlays has already received a postcard. So they've already received correspondence from the city. And so we're hopeful that that won't cause any hate and discontent, Mr. Inman.
Okay, I, I hear you.
Mr. Redmond?
Yeah, um, what about commercial property owners? Seems to me if you own a restaurant, whether or not you're, you know, on Shore Drive or at the oceanfront, seems to me a change in zoning with regard to potential visitorship makes a big difference. I mean, I would think commercial property owners would need to be included in that.
Um, we can, we can provide, okay, well, we'll see what we can do. My concern is to assure that we make sure that we meet the legal notification requirements for whatever you may be proposing. But we, but we will try to provide additional outreach, Mr. Redmond, so that those property owners know as well.
Well, if we're going to do outreach, then let's do outreach and not fake outreach is kind of my view. It already has a little bit of that feel because, you know, it looks like we're already operating under the, some of these things anyway. So I mean, if we're going to do outreach, it seems to me it ought to be as substantive as we can make it. Not really just to check the legal requirement box.
I understand. Mr. Inman, do you have another comment?
All right, it's Mr. Tahan. Looks like we know what direction we're going to be going in. And we will wait to hear back from you on some dates for the virtual, unless something else happens in the next four weeks, for our virtual workshop.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll, we'll go ahead and move on to our, to our public hearing briefing.
Okay. Good morning, commissioners, Chair Weiner and Vice Chair Wall. Thank you for welcoming, welcoming me back today to request your approval and vote on a recommendation to city council to adopt the 2021 Active Transportation Plan. As you know, I am your Active Transportation Planner in the Planning, Design and Development Division of the city's Parks and Recreation Department. And at your December 9th, 2020 meeting, I presented the final draft 2021 Active Transportation Plan, which is a component of the City of Virginia Beach Comprehensive Plan. There have been no changes to the plan since presenting to you last month. And today, your vote would be to recommend adoption of this plan to supersede and replace all reference to the former 2011 Bike Ways and Trails Plan. I am happy to answer any questions you may have. And I have with me today, the Bike Ways and Trails Advisory Committee Chair Amy Frostik and Vice Chair Walter Camp, who would like to say a few words in support of the plan. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name's Amy Frostik. I am Chair of the Virginia Beach Bike Ways and Trail Advisory Committee and also co-owner and President of J&amp;A Racing, a event management company that organizes seven large running races in coastal Virginia. I would like to first acknowledge the hard work that has been put in by Elaine and several others. This has been in the works for two years and I think we have a great, amazing plan. And I appreciate the opportunity to work with Elaine on this. She has been a great leader and has put lots of time and energy into this. So thank you, Elaine. The Active Transportation Plan reflects public comments, both directly and from the BTAC and input was sought from numerous agencies and departments of local government to ensure we are all aligned. So a lot of people had some input in this. It was just not BTAC and just Elaine and I. It was a big group that had some input on this. And as you all know, active transportation is something that's really near and dear to my social and also employment. But bicycles aren't just for transportation anymore. They, I'm sorry, just for recreation anymore. People are using many types of transportation beyond just bikes. And we as a city, I feel like need to embrace these modes of transportation and provide a safe, active transportation plan to support these modes. I look forward to these changes proposed in the plan and appreciate any recognition that you all can give it. Thank you.
Thank you also for the opportunity to comment. My name is Walter Camp. I'm the Vice Chair of BTAC. And I just wanted to add that implementing this type of forward-looking plan can be transformative for our city, as many other cities across the nation have experienced. The ability to adapt, anticipate and facilitate evolving public needs in this area will put us in great stead. We're very excited to see the city adopt this plan and BTAC looks forward to assisting and with the implementation of the specific projects and programs where the rubber hits the road. Thank you again.
Thank you, Amy and Walter. And with that, if there are any questions, I'll turn it back over to the commissioners. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? All right. Mrs. Lynn, thank you very much. We appreciate that. We will add this to the consent agenda. Thank you very much. We do appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. We're on to item number two.
Good morning, everyone. It's Marshall Coleman. Item two, the Marina, the Marana, sorry, I can't pronounce that name, Berkeley Revocable Trust is requesting a withdrawal of the application as the family of the property wishes to no longer pursue the street closure. And item three, the George Randolph Webb Jr. and Lilia Graham Webb is requesting a deferral of their application until the February 10th planning commission due to the withdrawal of agenda item two, because they were being hurt together. Item three is requesting to be deferred until February the 10th. The next item is agenda item four. This is an application for a conditional rezoning of a 40,017 square foot parcel along Dam Neck Road from AG2 Agricultural to a conditional R5D residential district. The existing single-family dwelling was constructed in 1950 and has access from Dam Neck Road. The existing dwelling will be demolished to create two single-family building lots. One lot would be 20,000 square feet and the other would be 19,000 square feet. Each lot exceeds the minimum lot size, lot width and front yard setback requirements for the R5D residential district. The proffered elevations depict two store dwellings with vinyl siding, asphalt shingles, vinyl double-pane windows and aluminum gutters. The property is located in the 65 to 70 noise zone within Sub Area 2 surrounding Oceana. The application was considered by the Joint City Navy Review Process. The group found that the proposal to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and city zoning ordinance requirements for an infill project. In staff's view, the proposed single-family dwellings will improve the aesthetics for the adjoining property owners and those traveling along Dam Neck Road. The homes will be compatible with the surrounding residential homes along Dam Neck Road in size and design and will be similar to the single-family homes west of the site. Staff is unaware of any opposition to this request and is recommending approvals subject to the conditions listed in the report. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of you may have.
Mrs. Klein, do you have a question?
I do. Thanks, Marshall. No problem. There's a comment, traffic engineering does not typically allow driveways in turn lane tapers.
Yes. So there is an existing driveway in the Dam Neck Road and it's within that turn lane. But since it's already existing and that, you know, they don't have anywhere else to access, traffic engineer is okay with them putting the entrance where it is. It's, it's actually already existing there today.
Okay. So when it says may introduce a new safety issue for this area, is that because it'll actually be in use at this point?
Well, it, I'm not sure if Rick is online, but you know, it's going from one unit to two. So there'll be a little more traffic coming off on Dam Neck Road. There's just potential for, you know, just more usage from that site. But traffic is okay with them, you know, putting the entrance there. Right.
Thank you.
No problem.
Marshall, this is Rick.
Hey, Rick.
Um, Ms. Klein, it, Marshall had it right. We normally don't put access points in tapers, but in this case, there's no other location for it to go. So it is increasing from one unit to two units, but that's part of, you know, you need to consider on this one.
Thank you, Rick. Mr. Horsley, do you have any comments or are you okay with this? And this is Prince Zan area?
I think everything's good with Dave, because I, I put it on the consent agenda.
Sounds good. Thank you, sir. All right. On to the next one.
Okay.
Hold on a second. Does anybody, everybody okay with this being put on the consent agenda? Let me ask real quick. Any comment? Thank you very much. Okay?
Okay. The next item is agenda item five, Michael and Felicia Giuliano. This is an application for a street closure of an alley adjacent to property located on Vanderbilt Drive in the Croatan neighborhood. The applicant is requesting to close a portion of the platted unnamed and unapproved alley that is adjacent rear, that is adjacent to the real lot line. The closure of half of the 15-foot wide alley totaling about 375 square feet will be incorporated into the applicant's residential lot. A viewers' meeting was held on December the 2nd, including city staff from Departments of Public Works, Public Utilities, Planning and the Office of the City Attorney to consider this request. The viewers determined that the proposed closure would not result in any public inconvenience and deemed that the closure of this right of way is acceptable. This street closure is consistent with many other street closures that have been approved by you in the Croatan neighborhood over the years. Staff agrees with the determination and is recommending approvals subject to the conditions listed in the report. Staff is unaware of any opposition to this request and we will be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
No questions? Mr. Akrez, this is your area.
Yeah, I, I haven't heard any opposition. I'm, I'm good for consent.
Sounds good. We'll put this on the consent. Thank you.
The next item is agenda item six, Janice Hart. This is an application for a conditional use permit for a home-based wildlife rehabilitation facility located on Gun Hall Drive in the Gun Hall Manor neighborhood. in the Gun Hall Manor neighborhood. The applicant is seeking to provide care to juvenile wildlife such as possums, flying squirrels, rabbits, and raccoons within a unit of the duplex dwelling on the property. According to the applicant, the mammals will be rehabilitated indoors within cages set up solely for their care. Two to three weeks prior to the animals' release, they will be relocated to one of the outdoor enclosures within the applicant's fully enclosed backyard. The outdoor enclosures will be fully screened from the view of adjacent property owners as it is completely enclosed with a six-foot-tall wood privacy fence. The outdoor cages will meet the requirements of the Virginia Department of Game and Inland Fisheries. The existing cage has been placed in anticipation for this use, and no animals will be left outside unsupervised or overnight. As provided in your supplement package, staff received three letters of support and letters of opposition from two adjoining property owners concerned about potential harm to children and other domestic animals, adverse impacts on home values, overall desirability of the use within this neighborhood, and the releasing of animals from the site. The applicant has informed staff that the animals will be transferred by vehicle to the applicant's sponsor in Suffolk, Virginia to be released into their natural habitat. Based on staff's evaluation of this proposal, staff is recommending approval of the application subject to the conditions in the report. I'll stand by for any questions.
Mr. Horsley, how do you feel?
Well, I think y'all know my feeling about these type operations, but we've been approving them for years. You know, I understand the complaints, but we get the same complaints we get with residential areas. But it seems we haven't had any problems with this. So I would say we can go ahead and, I don't know whether any of the opposition is going to be there today, but if it is, we'll take it off, but otherwise, I'd pick on the agenda.
There will be opposition here today to speak on this one, so you might want to hear it.
Yeah, but we'll have to hear it then.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good. We'll move it. There were two items to be heard. Okay?
Hey, Dave. David's got, Dee's got something. I have something also.
Let me say something real quick, you guys. It's kind of hard for me to see you all, so just sign on and just say, hey, I need to say something, okay? Because it's really hard for me to see you guys.
Hey, the only thing I want to say about this application, and of course, I thought I was fine with it, but the closeness or the proximity of the neighbors, this is really a tight area. And I'm just going to put it out there for y'all. I am not comfortable approving this one just because of the size of the yard and how close the other neighbors are. Usually, we have a little more wiggle room when they have them. So I'm not a huge fan of this particular application, but I'm just going to put it out there. We're going to hear it anyway, so, all right.
Okay, sounds good. We're definitely going to hear it. Thank you.
Hey, David, this is Jack. I've got one thing. And it's in the conditions, it states that the pre-release cage must have a double-door system, but it seems like the photo of the cage that's presented doesn't seem to have any kind of a double-door system. And maybe it's just me that I can't really, I don't really understand how the cage operates, but it's, the cage shown doesn't seem to have the double-door system. So it just, it didn't seem to be in compliance with the condition off the bat. So that's just an observation, and maybe your staff can weigh in on that.
Hey, Mr. Waugh, the cages do have the double door. It might not look like it in the photos, and the applicant is aware that they need to be double-door. And there's one existing, which is the picture on the top, if you're looking in the staff report. Here, I'm going to go to the slide. And then the second one is a proposed version of this cage.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, sounds good. So we're going to hear it anyway, so we will discuss this when time comes. All right, Mrs. Coleman?
All right, the next one is Agenda Item Seven, St. John the Apostle Catholic Church and School. This is an application for a modification of conditions for religious use in private school located on Sand Bridge Road. The 10.87 acre site currently consists of a church, parking lot, office space, and a private school. To accommodate the growing parish and to better serve parishioners and guests, the applicant is seeking to expand the site to include a 23,791-square-foot multipurpose social hall addition, a 300-square-foot office addition, a 5,418-square-foot classroom addition to the existing school, a 478-square-foot chapel, and a columbarium and memorial areas. The site currently has 296 parking spaces on the site. Even though the current parking requirement is exceeded by 50 spaces, the applicant is still, has mentioned that there is still a shortage of parking on the site. To address this, the applicant is proposing to add an additional 188 parking spaces, which you can, which can be shown on the plan. It's kind of highlighted in red, so you can see those additional parking spaces. And the parking requirement would be exceeded by over 211 parking spaces. The applicant will also be expanding the onsite internal vehicular circulation of the site to better accommodate the drop-off and pickup of children at the school. As shown on the conceptual landscape plan, existing vegetative buffers will be retained and where necessary, supplemented with new plantings. The proposed elevations depict brick-constructed buildings, which are designed to complement the architecture and character of the existing buildings on the site. Traffic Engineering has reviewed this application, and more review and discussion will take place during the final site plan review to address a possible right-turn lane or an installation of a gate at the main entrance. And this is to address traffic concerns during weekday drop-off and pickup of children at the school. A preliminary stormwater analysis was submitted to the Development Services Center. Upon submission of this application, city staff and the engineers and developers for the project recognized that more substantial stormwater management infrastructure was necessary to meet anticipated regulatory requirements. The DSC found that the submitted stormwater strategy has the potential to successfully comply with the stormwater regulations for this site. Staff is unaware of any opposition to this request and is recommending approval of this application subject to the conditions in the report. Due to the concerns from the applicant, Condition Eight has been revised to provide more clarification, and that was included in your supplemental package. This revised condition was submitted, like I've mentioned, in your supplemental package. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions? I can see y'all now, so I can see anybody putting their hand up. All right, this is Mr. Horsley, back at Prince Zan again.
Yes, sir. You won't see me. I'm not on video today. But anyway, I think they've done an excellent job of trying to maximize this. It's a rather odd-shaped piece of property. And, you know, since we don't have any opposition, I don't have any problem with putting them on consent agenda. I think they're doing a good job down there. And with the new stormwater regulations and all of that regulation, I think everything's up to what it should be. So I would recommend approval, and it'd be fine to put it on consent if you want.
Sounds good. Everybody okay with consent? All right, we'll put that on consent. On to the next one.
All right. Good morning, Planning Commissioners. This site is located on a 1.9-acre parcel, next slide, please. Zoned R40 in the Lakeview Park neighborhood in the Bayside area. Next slide. This is a request for an outdoor recreation facility at the home. Next slide. The outdoor recreation facility exists along the rear fence line in the middle of the backyard. There is a pitching machine, artificial green mats and home plate, three 12-foot-tall lights mounted to posts along the fence, and a net. The applicant, applicants have five kids that no longer live at the house, but grew up here. Family members, friends, and neighborhood kids have used the area over the years for practicing ground ball catching. Next slide. The applicant was unaware of the need for the conditional use permit, and based upon notice by the zoning office, the applicant submitted the conditional use permit application in order to correct this oversight. According to the applicant, the recreation area is used by the applicant's friends and children in the neighborhood. It is not open to the general public. Next slide. The conditional use permit request for outdoor recreation facility on this large 1.9-acre lot, in staff's opinion, is acceptable. To minimize impacts to the neighbors, staff recommends a condition that limits the use of the outdoor recreation area to between 9:00 a.m. and dusk, and the removal of the existing light fixtures for this use. Staff recommends an annual review of the permit by the planning director to ensure the use is consistent with the conditions and compatible with surrounding residential uses. Next slide, please. There are eight letters of support, a petition of support with 24 signatures, which was submitted by the applicant. A letter of concern was submitted by the Lakeview Park Civic League president with concerns on traffic, littering, and children urinating in the neighbor's yard. There are four letters of opposition. The main issues include a neighbor states that baseball lessons for profit occur at the site, parents and kids at the lessons trespassing on property and littering, lights from the operation, sound from the lessons, traffic generated to the site and parking in the unimproved Claudia Drive right-of-way that takes you to this house. As you can see on the map, there's no road that's paved to this residence. A petition of opposition with 27 signatures, which only states opposed to outdoor recreation facility at this address, was submitted by the neighbor across Claudia Drive at the corner of Claudia Drive and Colon Road with their side yard along this unimproved right-of-way. This petition doesn't state why the people signing it oppose it. One of staff's observations is that at least three properties have both support and opposition on one property. Staff is unclear if lessons are run for profit, but the applicants can speak to that. Staff does recommend approval of the application with the conditions noted in the staff report. Please note that the applicants are not agreeable to the condition for removing the lighting, limiting the activity to dusk each day, and ensuring the area has a privacy fence between the activity and the neighbors. Are there any questions?
Mr. Redmond?
Well, so did you ask them whether they do lessons for profit?
I did not directly ask that. They did not put that in their application or in our discussions we've had.
Can I chime in? I'll tell you how baseball works. There's pitching lessons, hitting lessons, everything is happening there. There's probably somebody that is instructing, and that person is being paid. It's not really a business. It's usually somebody that played baseball. Maybe they played minor league ball, but they are, you know, it's paid instruction. Typically, it's how that works, just so I'll let you know.
Well, where I'm going with this is I'm trying to figure out whether this is, you know, a conditional use permit for an outdoor recreation facility or for a home-based business.
So Dave, I might be able to speak to that a bit. We went to, we did the site visit, and the owners made it very clear that there is no business of any kind occurring on this site. It is strictly for the enjoyment of their family and friends. And like, they were vehemently against the idea that any instructions or lessons were occurring on the property. I also found it interesting that one of the late emails we received, the woman said that the petition, she was getting fined by the city for having a birthday party for her granddaughter. And when she later learned the purpose of the the application, that was not the case at all. So I don't know how many of the people that signed the petition of the support were under the impression that, are under the same impression that we are as to the purpose of this application.
And to answer your question about whether this is a conditional use permit for outdoor recreation facility or home occupation, the zoning administrator made that call after discussing the zoning complaint that was filed with the zoning inspector as well as observing what was going on on the site. So he made that call.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just trying to avoid it. He said, she said here. And I think that's probably a relevant question to have asked earlier in the process. I don't put a lot of stock in petitions. I go around my neighborhood and get 100 signatures on a petition that says almost anything. So I just, for what it's worth, I don't think they get you much. We're obviously going to hear this, or at least it certainly sounds like we're going to hear this. So I don't think we need to beat the dead horse anymore.
Yes, several folks are signed up to speak.
All right, thanks, Jonathan.
Thank you, sir.
Jack, did you want to say something?
No, I think that it'll, you know, things will be clarified, you know, when we hear it.
Sounds good.
One thing that might be confusing some of the neighbors, I see it in their application. They state, "We run a small business from our home called Simply Sales, Inc." Did that come up in the discussions with the applicant?
No, it did not. They are permitted to have a home-based business by right if they meet certain standards of the zoning ordinance.
That's, Mike, that's unrelated to this thing. That's what they do for a living. They do promotional stuff, which they do out of their home. It's not associated with this thing.
Well, I assumed that also. I just thought maybe there is traffic that's associated with that business that others assume are baseball, people partaking of lessons in baseball or something. And they're not totally unrelated to baseball or the outdoor recreation.
I think we'll have some speakers later attest to the fact that three or four vehicles will be parked out in the street in the unimproved right-of-way and, you know, wait for their children to come back after some time there. Any other questions?
We know we're going to hear this, so we will put it down to be heard. Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you all. The next slide, please. Thank you. This is a request to operate a beauty salon at the property, next slide, located along Haygood Road and zoned O2 Office District. The zoning ordinance identifies beauty salon as a conditional use permit within the O2 District. Therefore, a conditional use permit is required. The applicant has an existing 750-square-foot beauty salon within a unit of the office complex. She recently began operating the salon and was unaware of the need for a conditional use permit and has filed the application to correct this oversight. No modifications to the exterior or signage is proposed. This use provides a service to the community and will not change the character of the neighborhood or affect their nearby residential properties. I am not aware of any opposition on this request. Staff recommends approval of the application with the recommended conditions noted in the staff report. Are there any questions?
Mr. Redmond?
Consent.
Sounds good. Everybody good with consent? All right, you're on.
Good morning. This is Waugh from planning the next couple items on my Agenda Item Number 10 and 11. This is a request to rezonate 4.5 acres from AG.
Me, Waugh, I can't hear you, buddy.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I'm not sure why you guys are wearing masks. We're having a hard, I'm having a hard time hearing some of y'all.
Is that better? All right, sorry about that. All right, so this is a rezoning request to... All right, sorry about that. All right, so this is a rezoning request to test. Is that better? All right, maybe just move closer. This is a rezoning request to rezon 4.5 acres from HE2 to Agriculture District to Conditional B2 Community Business District. And a request for a conditional use permit in order to construct a three-story climate facility, self-storage facility. These, the 169,000 square feet contemporary-style building is approximately 45 foot tall, consists of oak ton extra building material of architecture, metal panels, brick veneers, EFS, and stucco. The site is developed with two single-family residents and is located within the highest noise zone of the acreage where residential uses are not compatible. If approved, the dwelling will be demolished to make space for the storage facility. There are consider, consideration has been given to the site layout for the proposed development to minimize any impact to the adjacent dwelling located east and north of the subject site. The building is proposed along General, General Booth Boulevard with parking and a PMB pond in the rear of the site. A six-feet fence and a 15-feet-wide landscape buffer is proposed along the western line of the adjacent property that is on agriculture and developed with a single-family dwelling. The dwelling will be located approximately 220 feet from the proposed building. Access to, to the site is via a shared access easement with the Dam Neck Crossing, Dam Neck Crossing Shopping Center. There would be no vehicular access from Old Dam Neck Road. As shown on the submitted plans, the proposed fencing, landscaping, and lighting appears to meet the requirements of Section 237 of the zoning ordinance for a storage detail in the report. Staff is recommending approval of this request, subject to the proffers and conditions listed in the report. Are there any questions?
Any questions at all? This is Princess Anne, Mr. Horsley. Mr. Horsley, are you out there?
He's making a sandwich.
Does, um, anyone have any issues with this being on the consent?
I, I don't have any issues. I mean, it looks like they did a good job with the siding of the building. I mean, it is close to general, pretty close to General Booth Boulevard. But, um, you know, they've moved it away from existing residential. It's pretty intense intersection there, pretty dense, uh, dense area. So it's kind of a parcel that got passed over as, you know, agriculture.
I was waiting.
There you are, Mr. Horsley. Go ahead.
Okay. No, I don't have a problem with this. I had, I had one call about this concern about letting them put it ready next to the street, but we've, we've, that's kind of been the the way they've been building self-storage units lately, and it's in an area that, um, that, that I, I think it, it fits very well. So I, I don't have a problem with it. We put it on consent agenda, it'd be fine.
Okay, sounds good. That will move on to consent and on to the next one. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item Agenda 12 is a, is a subdivision variance request to create three residential lots that are below the minimum lot width and street line furniture requirements for properties on all 4D residential district. This is the area of the site and site conditions today. The original woodhouse estate contained approximately 160 acres of land. The land was subdivided and so over time leaving the remaining 8.3 acres, 5.2 of which is located above water marsh, floodplain, and wetland. This is, this is the site of original woodhouse residence. Since then, the family has moved out of Virginia Beach and therefore seek this request in order to sell the property. The required minimum lot width in all 4D district is 125 feet, and the required street line furniture is 15 feet. The proposed lot width and street line furniture for each lot is 13.26 feet. As shown on the layout plan, a shared driveway is proposed with evergreen planting along the western side of the driveway and a portion of the northern property of the proposed lot 3 to screen the development for the adjacent lots. All proposed development will be located within the 100-feet resource protection area buffer. Staff find the proposal to be consistent with the principles of the comprehensive plan for the suburban area. The proposed residential lots will be compatible in size and use with the, with the development pattern in this area. And based on the consideration, consideration described in further detail in the report, staff is recommending approval of this request, subject to the conditions listed in the report. Staff is not aware of any opposition to this request. Are there any questions?
Questions, Mr. Graham?
Um, I don't have any problem with this. Uh, at one point, they were going to try to do more than three lots. It's a beautiful piece of property. It's actually the back of my neighborhood and I've walked the dog back there. Just, I mean, I think doing it as three lots is, I mean, it's, it's the best way to go. They're very large lots. I don't have any problem with it. I think it should be on the consent agenda unless, unless there's, uh, any opposition.
I don't, this is Jack. I don't have any problem putting it on the consent agenda. It's just making a note that it, it seems like on subdivision variances that, um, that typically don't we see the elevation views of the homes before we, we do, um, you know, we move forward with, with these kind of applications?
That's correct. The elevations plan would not submit this request due to the applicant is not intent to develop this lot as they propose to divided lot in solar as vacant land for developers to develop, develop. And there's a condition added to make sure that the architecture and, uh, design style that will be consistent with this neighborhood.
Um, and Jack, I can, um, it's talk a little bit about that. Um, it's in, it's in an area where I, I'm assuming these lots are going to be probably close to a million dollars each. Um, I think whatever gets built here is going to be very attractive, high-end. Um, this, this is, there's, they're not making waterfront property anymore, especially in the great big area. I mean, it's going to, whatever goes there, it's going to be nice. So I, I don't, I don't have an issue with it.
Can I, can I just add? Um, I think Wa kind of said to me what was the, you know, most important sentence in his presentation, which is, when developed, these, um, you know, these three sites are going to be very consistent with the neighborhood that surrounds it. So, I mean, it, it, as Whitney kind of says in a way, they're going to be beautiful homes and it's certainly the development pattern. Sorry, this iPad keeps rebelling on me all. The development pattern is, is consistent with the neighborhood around it. So, I mean, I'm, I'm sure it'll be fine. I bet they will be beautiful homes too.
Well, this is definitely the best way to handle it because it's virtually impossible for the owner of the property who's going to, during the subdivision, to have any idea what's going to go on the property, each of those lots at this point in time.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're consistent and if, if we're not consistent, then we have a reason. And I think we do for this, this application. So, thanks.
Okay, so what I heard, well, we're going to do consent on this one, correct?
Correct.
All right, all right, sounds good. Go on consent on the next one.
Right. Item number 13 is a conditional use permit request to operate a car wash facility for automotive detailed services of vehicles from the applicant's dealership locate, that is located approximately 0.2 miles from this property. The parcel is Zone B2 Community Business District and is located within the Central Village District of Pembroke SGA. The property is developed with a former single dwelling that has been modified for commercial use. The detailed services will, will occupy 800 square feet, the 800 square feet garage and the remaining 1,900 square feet of the building will be used for storage. No automotive repair will be conducted on-site. Vehicles requiring detailed services will access the property from the unimproved segment of the right-of-way that is partially located on the applicant's property. According to applicant, there will be no more than six vehicles, including the employee vehicles, will be parked on-site. The vehicles will be parked behind the building enclosed by a wood and chain link fence. Planting is proposed along a portion of Broad Street and a proposed hour of operation on 9:00 AM to 5:30 PM Monday through Saturday. In staff's opinion, the request to operate an automotive detail service establishment at this location is not acceptable. Broad Street serves a boundary between the commercial and residential use in this area where the south of, where south of the, of Broad Street are commercial uses and north of Broad Street are residential uses. While the property is located in the southern side of Broad Street, unlike other commercial lots with auto-related use without have their main access from Virginia Beach Boulevard, this side will access from Broad Street, which has a residential character and is not compatible for commercial use that doesn't support the residents. While the application states that there would be no, only six vehicle on-site, it does not limit how many vehicles can be brought to the site for detailing services each day, nor can, could this be easily monitored or enforced. The Pembroke SGA plan emphasized the importance of preserving the character of adjacent neighborhoods and providing compatible, compatibility between future development and this adjoining neighborhoods. In staff view, the proposed use is not in keeping with the recommended that policy of the comp plan as it, as it introduced an auto-related operation the service to, in the community. The use on Broad Street as access to the site could negatively impact residents located across the street. Of particular concern is the intrinsic nature of the operation as well as the potential for the site to become disorderly from a visual standpoint. In, in addition, constant noise generated from the equipment used to perform the detailing services could disturb the residential character in the area. And based on the consideration described and further detailed in the report, staff is recommending approve, staff is recommending denial of this request. Staff did receive three letters of opposition to this request noting concerns related to in, related to incompatible use, commercial business parking on residential street, traffic, safety, and noise. Are there any questions?
Questions, anyone? Mr. Rebbin?
Yeah, I think we're going to hear it, right?
Yes, we would. If it's going to be, if the staff has recommended denial, then yes, we would hear it.
It's, so, I mean, but, I mean, this is a commerce zone B2, correct?
That is correct.
All right. Um, well, we'll hear it then. Thanks.
I imagine most people got the same emails I got. I, I've probably got, uh, 10 emails in opposition to this neighbors.
Okay, we'll put it on to here. Sound good? Next one.
The next two items are conditional use permit requests, one for a bulk storage yard and one for truck and trailer rentals. The 11.8 acre parcel is Zone B2 and is occupied by Home Depot. The proposal will occupy 169 parking spaces of the available 659 parking spaces in order to store mulch, sheds, small construction equipment, trucking, and truck and trailers for rental. The remaining parking spaces will meet the parking requirement. The zoning ordinance requires that the area for bulk storage and vehicle storage to be screened with a category six landscaping, which includes solid fence not less than six feet in height with planting along the exterior of the fence. The submitted site plan, the submitted site plan depicts truck and trailer, small construction equipment rental area, and lumber along the western side of the building. The mulch storage area are proposed on the eastern side of the garden center along with park, along with a parking lot to provide both convenience and easy access for customers to pull up their vehicles and load the mulch. The mulch storage will be, eh, partially enclosed by a channeling fence with opaque screening that will be on a seasonal basis and typically last four months in the spring. The applicant is requesting a deviation to this, to the required fencing and landscaping. Specifically, a deviation to the storage area are, one, no perimeter fencing on the western side of the building. Two, no perimeter fencing or landscaping on the eastern side of the garden center. And three, for a partial screening with channeling fence and opaque, and opaque screening for the mulch storage area at the front parking lot. There, there are existing berm, mature trees and hedges along East, East Green Avenue, Newstead Drive in Princess Anne. And with the additions drops in evergreen planting in Star, the, the use will be outlet screen from public right-of-way. You can see the light green area along the entrance of Elson Green there. Those are the proposed landscaping as well as a landscaping, additional landscaping along Newstead. Staff find the proposal to be consistent with the goal set forth in the comp plan for the suburban area. As CCNO sells of mulch, truck and trailer rentals and small construction equipment rental services will provide a convenient and valuable service to the community that contribute to a sustainable and great neighborhood by offering necessary goods and services. This type of operations are common for big box home improvement stores throughout the city. And based on the considers, consideration described, staff is recommending approval of both of these requests, subject to the conditions listed in the report along with the deviation as described. Staff is not aware of any opposition to this request. Are there any questions?
Uh, any questions for anybody? Mr. Horsley?
Yes, uh, um, are you, are you sure that there'll be adequate parking even though they're using up some of the parking spaces on this property?
Yes, um, so they're utilizing 169 of the, um, 659 parking spaces. The, the remaining 490 parking spaces will meet the parking requirement for the, um, existing, um, building.
Again, my, 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 my concern is I, I'm, I've, I've voiced this many years ago too. Have these big stores like this build these big parking lots and then all of a sudden they start using it up for bulk storage on the outside. So evidently they, they overbuilt parking spaces in the beginning. Is this what, is this the case here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I don't, I don't have a problem with it as long as there is enough parking space left to accommodate the retail store.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dave. Go ahead.
No, ladies first.
I just have a question on the photos of it. Is that what it's going to look like currently where you see the mulch stacked above the hedge all along the road?
So that is the operation conditions today. Um, so the applicant has worked with staff to relocate the, the cities and mulch to an area that is more, more, that is more feasible, that provide better circulation to the site. In addition, a condition is added to ensure that the mulch and storage area will be screened and that there will be no stacking of material that is taller than the fence or the existing hedge row.
Mr. Rebbin, Mr. Rebbin, do you have a comment?
Yeah. Um, uh, just a couple of quick things. Yes, uh, Mr. Horsley, um, I know in the past, a lot of these big box uses, and for whatever reason, these home improvement centers in particular, were built with just these gigantic parking fields. And as a result, some years later, we've come back and, 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 um, uh, and, and, um, and 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 reformed, well, performed is not the best word, but again, changed our our parking requirements because we just had these huge, huge seas of asphalt that really weren't necessary. I mean, Holland Road is a good example. There's 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 a home improvement use there that, you know, in subsequent years, ended up sticking some 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 operations on the out parcel shops, you know, auto, you know, home improvement, I mean, a an auto repair place. And because they were just they were built with with really unnecessary amounts of parking. The second thing I'll say about this, I kind of thought this was cool in the sense that this site apparently according to the to the staff report is the largest is the highest selling of mulch in the United States. And to me, that's kind of a sign of something good. You have a lot of people who want to fix up their properties and take good care of where they live. And, you know, I kind of want to encourage that if there's no downside to it, if it's if there isn't a detriment. The idea that there are so many people in this part of of Virginia Beach that are that are engaging and, you know, and sprucing up their properties, which is what you're doing when you're buying mulch. Then I think that's I think that's cool. I think that's a good thing. So I'm all for it. Thanks.
Everybody good with consent?
Yeah, I'm fine with that, Dave.
Sounds good. Thank you, sir.
Item number sixteen is a modification of proper requests to a proper to an application that was granted by city council in ninety six with the develop with the development of a shopping center. Specifically, proffer number three, which required installation of a berm and a twenty five feet wide landscape buffer along the perimeter of the site. The applicant seeks to install a a drive through aisle and a small retaining wall that were encroached two hundred square feet into the twenty five foot buffer. The drive through aisle will be will be associated with the existing eating and drinking establishment, which is a by right use in the B two district. Additional planting are proposed along Lynn Haven Parkway and Princess Anne Row to screen the drive through aisle from the right weights and stripe parking are proposed for safe pedestrian access. Staff find the request to be acceptable as other drink eating and drinking establishment in immediate vicinity have drive throughs with a similar layout to this request. A hardship exists as this is a corner partial which impose which is which is imposed with two front yard setback observed from the right way. The encroachment is necessary in order to meet the turn radius of vehicles when when circulating the rear of the building. Staff is recommending approval of this request, subject to the proffer listed in the report. Staff is not aware of any opposition to this request. Are there any questions?
Questions, anybody? Mr. Wall, this is you.
Okay, I've got a I've got a few things that I'm not in opposition to this, but I'm not sure if Rick Lomans is on. That can possibly answer to any kind of impact to visibility of traffic. You know, at this site is can anybody speak on that from staff?
Jack, this is a lemon. Are you talking about Lynn Haven Parkway and Princess Anne?
I am, yes.
There are no there are no impacts to traffic based on what happens on this site.
Hey.
So.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Also, so it's there are a couple of things with this. You know, the visibility, it's it's fairly prominent corner of Lynn Haven and Princess Anne. So it's, you know, with the drive through and stacking of vehicles. I think that the application or the applicant has done a fairly good job with the the landscaping for this, and it may not appear appear to be enough room, but it looks like, you know, based on on the site layout and also in discussion with the applicant's representative that that lane can can go in and while still maintaining the existing landscaping, meaning those big pine trees that are fronting Lynn Haven and and Princess Anne, Princess Anne Road. So it's it actually you know, preserves existing landscaping while while adding in the the drive through aisle. And then they're supplementing that with with existing or not existing with proposed proposed hedge and other landscaping. Yeah, I guess this is on the the owner. I'm not sure if a dental office will want vehicles stacked, you know, through there. You know, I've been by many Starbucks where vehicles wrap around and even you spill out into neighboring streets. You know, and if that is the case, I don't think that the neighboring streets can have, you know, that big of an impact since it's not going into a major thoroughfare. So so in in summary, I'm fine with the application. And I'd recommend putting it on the consent agenda.
Sounds good. We had a consent agenda. I would like to add, though, I'm very familiar with this area and I'm really surprised. I'm happy to see that the actual the Starbucks has been there this long without a drive through. And what we're going through now, people not wanting to go in. I'm I'm glad that they're actually putting a Starbucks because this could have been vacant. This could have been a vacant site for a long time, but Starbucks has held in there for a while. So I'm really glad to see that. So I just think it's in agenda.
All right. Item seventeen is a conditional permit request for an outdoor recreation facility for a skateboard ramp. The applicant was unaware of the need for a conditional use permit and has submitted this request in order to rectify the oversight. The ramp is used by the by the applicant's children and would not be open to the general public. The ramp is about ten feet high with the with the railing and is partially screened by the existing vegetation. Additional evergreen planting are proposed to screen the ramp from the adjacent residential to the north. A deviate a deviation to the front yard setback is requested. A fifty foot setback is required for the R forty residential district. The ramp is placed thirty two feet for the front yard. Staff is reckon staff is supportive of the request as the existing railing is constructed twenty eight feet from the property from the front property line. And the the placement of a ramp will keep the ramp outside of the hundred feet buffer of the resource source protection area. This on the this under consideration described staff is recommending approval of this request, subject to the conditions listed in the report. Staff did receive an email noting concerns to this request related to noise as well as requesting that a hours of use be a condition and that there will be adult supervision on site when the ramp is in use. The applicant is not agreeable to the recommended conditions, number six and seven. Conditions, number six require a chain, the ramp to be chained to be secure across the ramp when it's not in use. And condition number seven requests adult supervision when the ramp is in use by the children. These conditions were recommended for safety measures and a means for noise mitigation. Similar requests have the same conditions apply for those requests with those type of requests. Are there any questions?
Mr. Graham?
I don't have any issues with it.
I got a question. Why are they? So they're they're not okay with the conditions that staff has put in place. So I have an issue with that. I mean, that's just for safety measures. And if everybody else in the city is under those conditions, I I don't see why they are an exception to the rule.
Dee, I agree with you wholly. And this may be one we may have to hear to listen to the applicant and talk to them about conditions. And unless because we, I know Mrs. Wilson's told us this before, we can approve it as per the conditions on there, whether they they approve it or not, they like it or not, we can we can approve it with the conditions. I mean, that's just the way it is. Let it move forward. Or we can listen to them and deny it if they don't like the if we don't they don't want the city to stop the conditions. I'll look it up to y'all. But I think we're probably going to need to hear it. Everybody agree with that? Yes, yes, my head. Okay, all right, we're gonna hear it.
That's fine.
All right, this is my last request for today. The applicant seeks to redevelop this site with a four thousand square feet convenience store with ten food plums. The one point zero eight acre site is zone B two community business and is currently occupied by a motor vehicle sales establishment and a car wash facility. Here's the second pictures today. The proposed building features coastal style architecture consists of fiber cement lap siding with brick veneer with an astral singles roof. The fuel canopy and dumpster enclosure match the architectural materials of the post of the proposed building. The layout plans show a berm at the southeast corner of Shore Drive in Greenwell and an eight feet high privacy fence with planting where the propose where the property abuts residential zone properties to the south. The proposed redevelopment will reduce the number of entrances along Shore Drive in Greenwell from four to two with pedestrian connection provided on Shore Drive and sidewalk to be installed on Greenwell. Staff find the proposal to be consistent with the recommended recommended recommendation of the comp plan that identify the shore dry corridor as a primarily for residential neighborhood area with commercial uses to support the residents. To prevent traffic human issues on Greenwell, a curb island is proposed to prevent left turn onto the site. Traffic engineer has reviewed this submitted T I A and concurred with its finding in that the intersection of Shore Dry and Greenwell will continue to operate and at an acceptable level of service. The applicant has worked with staff and the Bayfront Advisory Commission on the site layout and building elevations that are presented to you today. The proposal meets the requirement of the short dry corridor design guidelines. And based on the consideration described and further detailed in the report, staff recommends approval of this request, subject to the conditions listed in the report. One letter of opposition was received from the neighbor abutting this property, the latter noted concerns relating to health and safety, traffic and noise pollution. Are there any questions?
Ms. Oliver?
I've got one question. That letter obviously is from the the people that are directly behind him when we went on site to look. Can can you speak to the health issues on that? That was a pretty detailed letter and it did get my attention.
The applicant, an address wasn't provided to exactly where this site's located, but located, but from description, the letter is directly abuts this property to the south. She's just concerned specifically having the fuel tank so close to be in her home potential environmental issue to like health related to, you know, having a gas station next to her.
Right, and I got that from her letter. I was just curious as to what environmental issues or restrictions are put in place as far as a fuel tank in that close proximity to a resident.
Ms. Oliver, we'll have to take a look into that. I believe that it's handled by the fire marshal in the building code as far as the requirement for distance. And also other regulations as I'm getting message by our staff as well. So there there are other regulations that are in place that provide those protections to the public. And I will say that the proposed location that they have is not uncommon, nor something that has not been approved in other locations, meeting the other regulations.
Yeah, I've got a comment. And one thing is, you know, it it doesn't seem to be that common. I mean, I love the I actually like the application. I like it a lot. You know, the enhancement of landscaping and the mistakes in the building. But they they did bring up a good point about the the potential health effects. And I did kind of take a look, you know, around the city. You know, there really aren't that many that are adjacent to residential properties and just, you know, a few are the the recent one, Royal Farms down on Lynn Haven in Centerville and another one on Rosemont and Lynn Haven. But besides that, I didn't I didn't find too many gas stations that are adjacent to to residential.
If it deals with the underground storage tanks directly, then it's and again, I'm sorry, I'm trying to pull up the that letter of concern. I didn't have a chance to look at it. That is reviewed and according to the building code, which also takes into account the the fire code as well. So it does meet that proposal will have to meet the requirements of the setbacks from from property line, which is taken into account. And I saw, Mr. Redmond, you had a comment as well.
Well, yeah, I'm I this is not my first time on Shore Drive. I would remind everybody, this is this is Shore Drive. It is adjacent to Shore Drive. It is on a corner on Shore Drive that's currently occupied by you know, two pretty banged up commercial properties that are to be replaced by you know, a far nicer, far more modern facility that from a planning standpoint, to me, makes an awful lot more sense. Sense. This is a heavily regulated use. So you can't drop storage tanks anywhere. So I can imagine that there's a lot that goes into, but you know, you can't drop just drop this thing in the middle of thoroughfare or something like that. And so I the characterization of this is adjacent to a residential neighborhood. Well, you know, most streets we have are adjacent to residential neighborhoods. This is right on Shore Drive. So I don't know where, you know, it's not halfway up Greenwell on the way to First Court Road, if you know where that is. But if you know where this is, it's a, you know, it's a pretty prominent corner on one of the major thoroughfares that runs on an east west access to the oceanfront. So it seems to me to be precisely the kind of place where you would find commercial development of this sort. And indeed, there is already commercial development on that corner. So we do have a site plan review process, and I imagine those folks are pretty careful about all of various state and federal regulations that go into fuel storage. So I'm quite confident that all of those requirements will be met. I would, you know, I don't know whether we're going to hear this. If we have any opposition, I would recommend consent. I'm on this part of Shore Drive probably four days a week. Don't know that you are, but I am, and I'm well familiar with the site. We do.
I just I just want to let you know that I'm not objecting to to the application. I think it is a thousand percent improvement. And we were out there and I just wanted to make sure that the woman who wrote the letter since her house was in close proximity to it, got an answer from staff. And I think it's a gorgeous, absolutely perfect use of this piece of property. But I just she wrote a detailed letter of her concerns and I just want to make sure that it gets answered.
Dee. Dee, there's a there are a lot of requirements. There's daily monitoring of fuel storage. There's almost nothing that can happen there without there being an alert inside the building that there's a leak or something for a fuel underground. So there's a lot done to ensure the safety of underground storage tanks.
John, John, correct if I'm wrong, the the store, the underground storage tanks of twenty years ago were less regulated and more prone to accidents. Is that correct?
Well, the older, the older metal tanks used to use anodes to try to keep the tanks from rusting, which would eventually happen guaranteed. But, uh, new installations, like I said, they require monitoring of the fuel levels and water levels within the tank at all times.
Okay, I, I, uh, um, just Mr. Redmond, I actually have by this, um, probably five days a week. And I think it's a, I mean, I agree with Dee. I mean, it's a great use for the property, um, that wash has taken better date. I, I, I think that, um, I think it's a great use. And I think that, you know, I like the landscaping, the buffer that it's creating. And I just think it's gonna be a big improvement there.
Mr. Chair, we do have a speaker sign up in opposition to this request. So you-
So we will hear this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, Mr. DeHine, can I say something real quick? Um, I'm, I'm being told that there are participants that are raising their hand to speak and nobody's really said, I don't think they really said anything to them. This is just a planning commission briefing that they don't get to, that they're not, they can just listen to. They can't wait till later to talk. So if somebody wanted to mention that to them.
I, I think this is, they're, they're here, listening to it now, Mr. Chair, for the public. This is the informal session of the, of the planning commission. And this is just the briefings provided to the commission for their, for their information. All public comments will be taken during the items that they get heard during the formal session and will be recorded and shown on, on TV as well. So, uh, we do see that. You'll have your opportunity to speak when you sign up for the items. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alright, on to the next one. We will hear this one, number 18.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Aubrey Trubillcock, Planner with the City of Virginia Beach. Item 19 is a subdivision variance request in which the applicant is proposing to resubdivide the three existing parcels into a single 1.32 acre lot to be called Lot A. Three subject parcels, which total 1.32 acres, are zoned Ag 2 Agricultural District in the southern part of Virginia Beach. Development of the parcels is currently limited to the legally recorded 10,000 square foot lot, as it's the only property of the three to have been legally established. Proposed resubdivision would allow the applicant to make full use of this 1.3 acres that they currently own. The post lot would not be able to meet the minimum lot width requirement in Ag 2. Proposed lot width would be just 124 and a half feet wide, while 150 foot width is required. This would still result in an increase in width over any of the three existing parcels. However, lots which do not meet the minimum dimensional standards may only be resubdivided by right when all lots involved have been legally created. Therefore, the need for the subdivision variance arises from combining the legally created lot with the two improperly created lots to create a lot with substandard lot width. Um, as none of these lots currently meet the one acre lot size nor the 150 lot width requirements of the agricultural zoning district, the subdivision, resubdivision proposal would create a lot which would, uh, meet the requirements of the agricultural district more fully, while also eliminating additional density and therefore, uh, more reflect the comprehensive plan's vision for the rural area by limiting food growth and preserving the existing rural character. No opposition has, uh, been submitted to staff. And in consideration of these factors, staff is recommending approval subject to the condition provided.
Thank you, Aubrey. Um, Mr. Horsley?
Yes, sir. This is a win-win for everybody when they, uh, come behind these three lots into one and, and get them, get them recorded like they need to be in, in present day. There's a lot of this stuff that was done years ago that was done by Platt and it wasn't done by deed. And, and this, this straightens up a lot of those problems. And it's, uh, I agree wholeheartedly. So this is definitely a consent item.
Sounds good. Thank you, sir. Put this on the consent. Um, on the next one?
Alright, item 20 is also a subdivision variance request in which the applicant is proposing to reconfigure the property lines of two existing parcels. Uh, an existing, uh, two acre parcel, uh, next slide was legally subdivided by Platt in 1964. Uh, next slide, the 10,000 square foot parcel was improperly created by deed in 1961. Two subject parcels, which together measure 2.2 acres, are in the Ag 1 Agricultural Zoning District. Uh, the 10,000 square foot parcel, uh, which was improperly created, did formerly contain a single family home, while the two acre parcel, which was legally established, uh, has remained undeveloped. The proposal results in two parcels with square footages of approximately 52,000 square feet being parcel four and 44,000 square feet parcel five along the 15 foot wide private lane. Since neither lot will have direct access to a public street as required by the subdivision regulations, a variance is required. Required street line frontage is equal to 80% of the required lot width. Uh, in the agricultural district, uh, the lot width requirement is 150 feet, meaning you need 120 feet of street line frontage. Since they don't have any street line frontage, that's measured as zero and also requires a variance. Uh, the request to reconfigure these parcels will not increase the non-conformity of either lot and will result in both lots meeting the minimum lot area of the zoning district, whereas they currently do not. Uh, no new parcels are to be created, so this would not increase density from what is currently existing and would therefore be consistent with the recommendation of the comprehensive plan and also the inter, interfacility traffic area and vicinity master plan. Uh, they will still lack that direct access to a public street and will need to maintain access via a conditioned private access easement over the 15 foot, 15 foot wide lane to ensure continued access to Indian River Road. Uh, staff has received five letters of opposition. Um, next slide, uh, and next slide, uh, from neighboring property owners who cite concerns about the loss of trees on the property once it's developed and the potential impact to their drainage and flooding in the surrounding areas. It's a very marshy area. Um, to help address these concerns, um, in this is a late development. The applicant is offering to further condition their request with a 20 foot wide tree preservation buffer on the sides of the property bordering the West Neck Village subdivision to the west and to the north. This will be in addition to the two conditions that are already present within the staff report. Um, as the proposal will allow for the lots to better meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance while also satisfying the recommendations of the comprehensive plan and the inter, interfacility traffic area and vicinity master plan, staff is recommending approval subject to the conditions provided.
Alright, thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Horsley, this is you again?
We're busy today. You know, I, I think they've addressed the concerns and, um, I'm, you know, the, it's better than, than putting a bunch of smaller lots in there. So two, two large lots like that, I think is fine. So I don't have a problem with it. I guess we'll have, we're gonna have to hear it.
Aubrey, do you know if we're gonna have anybody come speak on this?
Um, I, I don't believe anyone has actually signed up to speak as of yet. Uh, a couple indicated that they might attend. I, I believe they've been talking with the applicant, so he may have resolved their concerns. But, um, as of now, I know, I don't know of any opposition that has signed up to speak.
Seems like the applicant is trying to, trying to work it out with the neighbors. So I'd say put it on consent and if somebody shows up, we'll just have to pull it.
Alright, sounds good. We'll put on consent unless somebody, uh, signs up to speak. It'll be on consent. Thank you.
I've got one question about this. Is the West Neck Parkway, is that, would that, was that ever planned to be extended through, through to Indian River Road? And maybe that was mentioned and maybe I missed it, but, um, maybe that does have any impact or bearing on this, this application. But I was just curious if anybody could, could speak on that.
What was that question?
It was, uh, it was concerning West Neck Parkway. And if that was ever-
Transportation plan, uh, did show this section as a future expansion, but, uh, it states the alignment of West Neck Parkway, uh, from North Landing Road to Indian River Road has been moved to the area just west of Courthouse Estates to line it up with the north-south portion of Lanstown Road. Uh, so there are no current, uh, plans to expand the roadway.
Okay, thanks.
No problem.
Mrs. Chair, just a clarification. The recommendation is for this item to be on the consent agenda with the additional condition added that the 20 feet buffer, is that correct?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, on to our favorite, short-term rentals.
Alright, good morning, everybody. So item 21, uh, is 4814 Lake Drive. It's in the Bayside District. This is a 5,000 square foot lot located within the R5R Shore Drive Residential District and contains one duplex building. Both units are owned by the same, by the applicant, the same person. Uh, he is only requesting a conditional use permit for one of those units. And it's my understanding that he's gonna be living in the adjacent unit. Um, even though the home looks like it might be a little older, uh, it was constructed in 1993, uh, so it's a relatively newer home in my opinion. On-street parking is not permitted on this portion of Lake Drive. There's no records of zoning violations relating to short-term rental use, um, as far as, uh, no records found relating to short-term rental use associated with this address. And the applicant does accept city council's recently imposed conditions, reducing the number of bookings in a seven-day period and limiting the overnight guest calculation to two per bedroom. There are two bedrooms located in the short-term rental, uh, unit requested. Uh, two parking spaces are shown in the proposed parking plan. Um, again, the site is located in the Chesapeake Beach subdivision, lies approximately 2,100 feet from the public beach of the Chesapeake Bay. And the parking plan does meet the requirements of Section 24121 of the city zoning ordinance. Based on these conditions, staff recommends approval of the request with the conditions listed in the staff report. There were two letters of opposition that were received stating concerns relating to parking, noise, the transient nature of the short-term rentals, and the positioning and location of trash receptacles. I did provide the information to the owner, so he had an opportunity to reach out, um, to those folks. And that concludes, uh, my, uh, information on that application. Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
I do. What, what, um, so they had an opportunity to reach out to those folks who had concerns. Is there any result to that, you know?
Yeah, so, um, and I'll just kind of read it verbatim. Um, one of them said, I only got response from one. Uh, the response from that person said, quote, "He just called me apologizing, uh, for not letting me know that he was turning the lower unit into an Airbnb." Um, apparently there was, uh, something to do with someone parking in a driveway. And, uh, he had told that person that the, that was not anyone connected to him. Um, and she said, or she or he said, "I wasn't planning to speak at the hearing, uh, but I will make every effort to do so." So you may be hearing from this person.
Okay.
Wad, do you have anybody sign to speak on this item?
There are no speakers sign up in opposition to this request.
Mr. Redmond, it'll be okay. I think we put it on consent agenda and if, uh, somebody signs up to speak, we'll pull it.
I, I agree entirely. Thank you.
Everybody, is everybody good with that? Sounds good? Alright, on to the next one.
Alright, moving on. Um, this is item 22, 11355th Street, Unit A. This is in the Lynn Haven District. This is a 6,625 square foot lot, zoned R5R North End in the residential district and contains one duplex building that was built in 1989. Um, the only, the owner only owns this half of the building. Um, parallel parking in the city right-of-way is permitted 24 hours a day. Therefore, any overflow parking beyond the minimum parking space required could occur in the public right-of-way. Uh, there were no records of any zoning violations relating to short-term rental use that are associated with this subject address. The applicant does accept city council's recently imposed conditions, reducing, reducing the number of bookings in a seven-day period to one and limiting the overnight guest calculation to two per bedroom. There are three bedrooms in this duplex unit or in this section of the duplex or, uh, this unit. The site is located within the North End Community, lies approximately 350 feet from the public beach Atlantic Ocean. The parking plan depicts all three required parking spaces in the driveway, in the existing driveway, which meet the requirements of Section 241.21 of the city zoning ordinance. Based on these considerations, staff recommends approval of this request with the conditions listed in the staff report. There was one letter of opposition received noting an objection in general to short-term rentals, um, and adding that the North End should be kept residential and not an extended resort area. In addition, there was, um, concerns raised about the visibility of the conditional use permit sign. I reached out to the applicant and, uh, he said he would ensure that the visibility issue is taken care of. Apparently, there was a, a truck or something that was parked in front of it. Um, the code for that does require that the signs be placed within 10 feet of the edge of the asphalt. So sometimes when there's on-street parking, it could be blocked, but he's gonna do his best to make sure that visibility is taken care of. Uh, does anyone have any questions or concerns relating to this one?
Dee?
Hey, well, I do, I just, um, looking at the layout for the parking, I'm not sure I understand. I just don't understand it. Um, we have a unit in the back and then we have a unit in the front. So which driveway do the three cars go in? Cause it, cause it says right here, and it says condo line separate, separation.
Yeah, so, um, the, the entrance to the other person's driveway is on 55th and a half street.
Okay.
So he comes in from there and then the applicant comes in from 55th Street. So it does look like one long driveway from front, from, from 55th to 55th and a half. I think there might be a little break in it, but I think it might, it could just be one long. But they do, are supposed to stop at their boundary line.
Okay, that explains it. And do they have the, the use of the other driveway?
I can only assume they, yeah, I can only assume they did. I didn't ask them about it because, um, they, they had more than enough in that one stretch. Um, but it's on their portion, so I can, I would assume that they do.
Okay, I just couldn't understand the map. I'm sorry, that was my fault. So-
Oh, no worries.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have anybody signed up to speak on this?
We do have one speaker sign up to speak on this item.
Okay, so we're gonna hear it anyway. Alright.
Um, the last one I have, it's, it's not item 22. It's, it's items actually 28 through 37. Um, they're gonna be asking for an indefinite deferral. It's the Mayflower and their attorney should be, um, here to, uh, make that request.
Alright, thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Good morning, planning commissioners. My first item for today, um, is Karen and Joe Allen located at 1361 Goose Landing in the Beach District. This is a 2,433 square foot parcel zoned A12 Apartment District in the Salt Marsh Point subdivision. This two-bedroom townhouse requires two off-street parking spaces and all are provided onsite within the driveway in front of the dwelling unit. All other requirements of Section 241.2 of the zoning ordinance regulating short-term rentals can be reasonably met by the applicant. The applicant is agreeable to the recent city council condition changes and no letters of opposition or support have been received. Please let me know if you have any questions about this.
Mr. Akrez, this is you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm good with it for consent.
Okay, we'll put this on consent. Um, okay, great. On to the next one.
My next application is for Vallo, located at 61925th Street. This is a 8,400 square foot parcel zoned R5S Residential in the Old Beach overlay. The single-family dwelling contains four bedrooms, thus four off-street parking spaces are required and provided in the driveway. The driveway is approximately 96 feet long and can comfortably hold the parking spaces. Since the property is with- parking spaces. Since the property is within the boundaries of the residential permanent parking program, parking passes issued for the subject dwelling units will be limited to two resident passes. Guest and temporary passes will not be permitted while the conditional use permit is active. All other requirements of Section 241.2 of the Zoning Ordinance regulating short-term rentals can be reasonably met by the applicant. The applicant is agreeable to the recent city council condition changes. Staff has received four letters of opposition citing parking concerns and the transient, and the overall transient nature of short-term rentals in the neighborhood. Are there any questions?
Mr. Alcaraz?
Yeah, I, I've received the opposition too. I don't know if, if, um, they're gonna be here to, um, express their concerns, but I'm pretty sure they will. But I, I don't know if anyone signed up. I'm having a feeling we're gonna hear it.
I'm being told by staff that nobody has signed up to speak on this item, correct?
There are no registered speaker, uh, except for the applicant on this item, Mr. Chair.
And since, having said that, being that it's not in the overlay district is, is, how does that affect our, our future votes? Mr. Weiner?
Well, there is a date, um, if I'm correct, there is a date of September 22nd, 2020. So if the ordinance goes into effect, that, whatever we vote on goes into effect. Everything that we voted on, anything that's been approved after September, if I'm correct, Bobby, correct, that will go, fall in line with that ordinance.
So as far as your analysis, Mr. Alcaraz, uh, you would have to analyze this based on the information you have in front of you and the ordinance as it is right now. If it gets the city council and they happen to have, if this was submitted, I believe this would be, would have been submitted after the transition date, um, then, uh, they would have to meet whatever requirement is in place when city council hears the item. So...
Summer, do you know if, um, they are operating now? Because the letters are, are pretty strong on this one.
Um, they have not been operating, um, since they bought this property, I believe. Um, the applicant bought this property this year. Um, though, the representative will be present for the formal hearing to speak on his behalf. Um, there could be the possibility that perhaps the previous owner, um, was operating, but this current property owner has not been operating a short-term rental.
So the current owner doesn't live there?
From the sound of it, I believe so.
You believe so? They do not live there, or they do live there?
I believe that, um, this is a secondary home. Um, the applicant representative will be present for the formal hearing and can, um, perhaps, uh, speak to that more, but it is to my belief that this, um, is a newly bought home that they don't reside in, new year-round at least.
So it's gonna be a business, basically. Um, this raises an issue with me that, uh, I was thinking about yesterday when I was looking at some of these, you know, um, this is a good example for, you know, about having a maximum number of, a, a maximum number of occupants, no matter what size the house, uh, that, for a short-term rental, so that you can't pack these. Now, I, I would be less concerned about this, this one, if it didn't show there's four cars in the driveway, and I'm thinking, wow, well, that's... bedrooms. I didn't, I didn't, I guess they got four bedrooms or five, what is it? I don't know.
Four bedrooms.
Four bedrooms, you know?
Correct.
It, it's probably not gonna be really cool to have in this particular neighborhood that I've seen. I'm familiar with it. I've ridden by there myself many times. Let's meet all the criteria. But do we really want that many people living, uh, uh, being, this property being available to that many people on short-term rental on a regular basis, which it's going to be? That's all I got.
Oops, sorry. One, one thing I have is that it looks like from the map that we did deny one on 24th Street. So I'm not sure, um, you know, what the foundation of that was, or what the reasoning behind that was. But, um, I was just curious, I'm looking at the map, and I...
Um, well, the applicant's gonna be here, we might as well, we could hear it. Y'all will hear it.
I, I'd like to hear this one. I'm sorry to drag everything out, but I would. This one gives me a little bit of pause.
Okay, no problem. We'll put it on to be heard.
This one, the letters also said that they had reached out to the owner, and the owner was unhelpful. Um, so that makes me question as to whether, it says they're not operating, but are they really operating?
Well, we will be able to ask them when we hear it. How's that?
Hear it, yep, thank you.
Sounds good. All right, next one.
Mr. Chair, may I ask Summer a question for clarification?
You sure can.
Summer, my information says there were letters of support as well. You mentioned letters of opposition, but in fairness to the applicant, are there letters of support?
Uh, no, there are no letters of support that have been received by staff. The next application does have letters of support, um, but not this one.
All right, thank you for that clarification.
Okay, so my final one for today is Kwan Lee located at 1612 Tallwood Manor Court located in the Centerville District. This parcel is approximately 10,114 square feet and zoned R7.5 residential. The single-family dwelling is located in the Tallwood Manor subdivision. Assessor's records indicate that this dwelling has six bedrooms, thus six onsite parking spaces are required. The applicant has submitted an alternative parking plan that shows two parking spaces in the garage, with the remaining parking being accommodated in the driveway, with one stacked parking space encroaching two feet into the right-of-way. As the space that encroaches into the right-of-way does not block vehicular or pedestrian traffic, the zoning administrator has deemed this plan acceptable. Staff believes that all of the requirements of Section 241.2 of the Zoning Ordinance pertaining to short-term rentals can be reasonably met. The applicant is agreeable with the recent city council condition changes. The applicant has met with seven out of the nine surrounding property owners in the subdivision. The applicant provided staff with a petition of support from surrounding property owners containing six signatures. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Mrs. Klein?
Sorry, I have no concerns.
Do we have anybody speaking on this item, like, opposition?
There are no registered speaker in opposition of this request.
Okay, we'll put that on consent. Everybody good with consent?
My only reaction to this one is, wow.
I, I, I understand, Mike, I understand. They meet the criteria, and they have letters of support, no opposition. Um, I'm good with consent if y'all are. Okay, on the next one.
Sorry, we're looking for the staff member for that one.
Good morning. Item 26 is William Joseph Wright Jr. located at 911 Pacific Avenue, Unit B in the Beach District. The applicant is requesting to operate a two-bedroom short-term rental unit. Two parking spaces are required for this two-bedroom unit. One designated parking space onsite will be available for the renters, and the second space will be met offsite. The applicant has signed and submitted a letter of intent to lease a second parking space at the 9th Street Municipal Parking Garage located just across the street. The zoning administrator has approved the applicant's parking plan. As recommended in Condition 2, the applicant will be required to submit, receive the proof of availability of a second off-street parking space annually to the zoning administrator while the conditional use permit remains active. The applicant is agreeable with all the conditions in a staff report and all requires, all requirements in a zoning ordinance. Regulating short-term rentals can reasonably be met. With this application, and staff recommends approval. Staff did receive a letter of concern earlier this morning regarding short-term rental application requests in this condominium complex. The, this letter of concern is from the owner of the unit below the applicant's unit, and is requesting for all short-term renters to be provided a set of rules and regulations of the condo association by the applicant, including conforming to the, um, HOA's insurance coverage, and for the applicants to gather proper identification from the renters, including license and vehicle information in case of police incident reports, which according to this letter has occurred several times, typically involving tenants. And I'll be here to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Alcaraz?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with this. This actually fits right into the district that it belongs. So I'm, I'm with consent unless the, uh, the neighbor under, underneath is gonna be there to voice his concerns, but I think it fits right in what, what short-term rentals needs to be at.
What about all the concerns regarding the, uh, police complaints?
There are no registered, uh, speaker in opposition to this request.
What about Mrs. Klein's question about, has there been any police reports or, um, on this particular item?
Based upon the letters, there have been police reports.
Right, based on the staff report, Miss Klein, oh, go ahead, Janice.
Sorry, uh, the letter, um, stated that, uh, the, the police incident reports were typically involving tenants. I'm not sure if the, the person is referring to the renters or the tenants of the, um, development, but the incident report has involved, um, a vehicle being stolen or damaged vehicle, as well as, um, and there was an incident with a party being held at a gunpoint in this development, as well as some fire incident caused by a smoking tenant.
Okay, so it's a, not a great area, but we don't know if those incidences are, incidents are related to this particular location.
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, we have nobody signed up to speak on this item, so we'll put this on the consent agenda.
All right, last item, Antoinette.
All right, good morning, everyone. My name's Antoinette. Folks, I am here to, um, give a brief overview for DND Creations LLC. The item is located on 2621 Highlands Meadows Way. There is a single-family home on the property. The applicant is seeking a short-term rental in their 15,000 square foot four-bedroom home. Therefore, four parking spaces are required. The applicant plans to meet the parking requirement by parking four vehicles in the driveway. While two of the four spaces lightly encroaching to the right-of-way, the flow of pedestrian or vehicular movements will not be impacted. Based on this, the zoning administrator reviewed the parking plan and deemed it acceptable. All other requirements of Section 241.2 of the Zoning Ordinance pertaining to short-term rentals can be reasonably met by the applicant. There is one known letter of opposition that was received yesterday by the neighbor right next door to this request, and staff has also received eight letters of support from surrounding property owners. Based on the considerations above, staff recommends approval of this request with the short-term rental conditions, also including city council's revisions, reducing the number of bookings in a seven-day period to one and limiting the overnight guest calculation to two per bedroom. If you have any questions, I'll be standing by.
Mr. Horsley? Mrs. Anne? Do we have anybody in opposition to speak on this?
There are no registered speaker in opposition of this request.
I don't think Mr. Horsley is online. His, um, does that show that he's not there?
Mr. Horsley is online. Mr. Horsley, you can unmute your microphone?
Hey, is that better?
There you go.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm running off of my technology experience here. Now, I, I don't think we've had any problems, and I'm, I'm sure it'll get, it won't get quite as mentally, but I guess we just will put it on consent as long as they meet all the qualifications.
All right, sounds good. We will put number 27 on consent. And that is our last item, correct? Staff, okay?
Mr. Chair, staff would like to reveal what we believe to be likely to be on the agenda for withdrawal, deferral, and consent for the informal session at noon. There are one item requesting for withdrawal, that is Agenda Item 2. Agenda Item 3 for deferral to the February 10th Planning Commission meeting. Agenda Items 28 to 37 are requested for indefinite deferral. Agendas Item 4, 5, 7, 9, 10, 11, 12, 14, 15, 16, 19, 20, 21, 23, 25, 26, and 27 are for the consent agenda for both the regular and the short-term rental reg, applications. Agenda Item 10 is recommend on consent with the additional condition added for the 20 feet buffer.
Well, um, number one is on the consent also. You didn't say number one.
I was gonna say, yes, thank you.
Okay.
Hey, Wad, did you say that number, um, consent, item number 20 is the one with the, is the 20-foot forced-to buffer, which would be added addition number 30? All right, thanks.
Okay, is that it? Everybody good? Mr. Don, you good? All right, we can adjourn the informal. Anything else?
Just as a reminder, Commissioners, please don't sign out of the WebEx. Uh, please just, uh, mute your microphones and stop your video. That way we don't, uh, have any issues. Um, and then if you can, please come back about five to 10 minutes, or in about five to 10 minutes, so that we can, uh, make sure everyone's, uh, mics are working appropriately still.
Sounds good. All right, we are adjourned from the informal. We'll be back at noon.